Why don't we start with the first two votes to get us in and out of executive and make your motions pass ten or eleven?
Okay, and I'm gonna make the motion.
Is that okay?
Okay. What is the way we're gonna do it?
Do the affirmation on the first vote. Then he'll go to come out. Then he's gonna go vote.
Yeah, extend, extend. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Charlie said it was.
Yeah, okay.
Help me.
Counselors, turn your microphone on, please.
Yes, sir. Yes, it's on.
Counselors, we're gonna do a reaffirmation of our vote to going to executive session. City clerk.
Okay, if there is one counselor that is not present, Counselor Almonte, who made the initial motion, I would suggest that the council president call for a vote going into executive session, seconded by Counselor Keno.
Okay, make the motion that we're going to a secondary session.
No, first.
Somebody else.
It's already.
Somebody else, okay.
No, what I'm suggesting is the motion was made and seconded, and I'm gonna do the roll call vote to affirm that at this point.
Okay.
It was already recorded as a first and a second, and unanimous vote of nine, nothing. There is one counsel missing.
Yes.
Can I proceed?
Yes, go ahead.
Counselor Vasquez.
Yes.
Vote to go into executive session. Counselor LaPlant.
Yes.
Counselor Tumi.
Yes.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Almonte.
Noted.
Noted, she was present at the last, and it will be noted she's not present at this session. Counselor Keno.
Yes.
Counselor Bernal.
Yes.
Counsel Vice President Alvarez Rodriguez.
Yes.
And counsel president.
Yes.
Unanimous, eight, zero. Now the vote to come out of executive sessions.
Motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
City clerk, roll call.
Counsel Vice President Alvarez Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Bernal.
Yes.
Counselor Keno.
Yes.
Counselor Almonte noted, Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Tumi.
Yes.
Counselor LaPlant.
Yes.
Counselor Vasquez.
Yes.
And counsel president.
Yes.
Eight, nothing, one absent.
I would like to entertain a motion to extend beyond ten o'clock.
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. I would like to entertain a motion to go beyond eleven o'clock.
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you. Counselors, what is your desire on the matter of document three ninety-five fourteen?
I would like to make a motion to table.
Second.
I was gonna table.
Motion has been made to table document three ninety-five fourteen, it has been properly second, or in favor say aye.
No.
Aye.
Yes.
Roll call.
Counselor Vasquez.
Yes.
Counselor LaPlant.
This vote.
Motion to table.
No.
Counselor Tumi.
Yes.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Almonte noted, Counselor Keno.
Yes.
Counselor Bernal.
No.
Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez, vice president.
No.
And counsel president.
Yes.
Passes five, three. Five in favor, three no, one absent. Passes table.
Okay. Document twelve fifteen, Mr. Chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee, is that a new document? Or something that we need to deal with now?
Counselor President, point of order, I just wanna make sure that I'm clear on the motion to table. So the question regarding the request of attendance from your Rivera, everybody knows as the vote of no confidence, has been tabled this evening, and that there's not gonna be a vote or any further discussion on any of those matters tonight.
That is correct.
Is that my understanding?
That is correct, that's I'm sure. That is correct. Okay. Again, is this a new document?
This is a new document.
I would like order. You may not like what the counsel, the actions of the counsel, but I want order.
Election time.
They wanted the way can take.
Hooray! I gotta be out. Counselors, document twelve fifteen is gonna be sent to the Budget and Finance Committee. The appropriation transfer, is that also a new document?
Yes, Mr. President.
That's gonna be sent to the Budget and Finance Committee. Let's go into committee reports. Document three sixty-seven fourteen. Is that a, is that, is that the housing committee? No?
No, Lawrence Redevelopment Authority.
Why would that, what?
Personnel.
Oh, from the personnel?
Yes.
Oh, that's right, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. Okay, the vice chair of the, you were drawn into it.
Yes.
Of personnel.
We met December.
Oh, let me talk.
I have it here.
Okay.
Yeah. We met December fifteen, and we sent up with a favorable recommendation, the name of Elias Rodriguez to be appointed for the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority. And I will make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Are there any questions for Mr. Elias Rodriguez? Are there any questions?
Just one. May I?
It's a reappointment.
Yes, counsel president, I wanna thank Mr. Rodriguez for answering my questions the other time, and also following up on it. I thought that that was excellent on your part, which demonstrates to me you're definitely a person that we should be supporting on our boards. It had something to do with the issue of public participation at the LRA, and he was able to find more information about it, and I wanna thank you for that, for making that happen. Lastly, I wanna encourage the other counselors to also vote favorably. Again, he demonstrated that he is a person that will not hesitate to follow through on stuff.
Okay, unless there was a question for Mr. Rodriguez, I'm gonna call it to a vote, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Mr. Rodriguez, congratulations. Thank you for being part of the.
Good morning.
Good night. Congratulations.
Ms. LaPlant, you have a motion to table document one sixty-five oh nine and three eighty-eight fourteen?
Excuse me, if it's okay with the counselors to make this happen quickly, I'd like to make a motion to table document one sixty-five oh nine and document three eighty-eight fourteen.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Mr. Budget and Finance Chairman, document three ninety-seven fourteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Document three ninety-seven fourteen is an approval to enter into a lease with the MBTA, which is the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority, and this was placed on the agenda by Mr. Vargas. Mr. Vargas was before the Budget and Finance Subcommittee meeting and explained what this will entail, and I will, for purposes of discussion, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Again, for purposes of discussion, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve document three ninety-seven fourteen, is there a second?
Second. Discussion.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
I just want an explanation of what it is.
Huh?
What, what area, what they wanna lease.
Oh, Mr. Vargas is there. Mr. Vargas, will you come forward, please?
Who are they gonna lease to? I mean, I know it's the MBTA, but through you, counsel president, I was just asking for an explanation. What is the facility that we wanna lease?
So, the, the director. So, the city, in past instances, has been able to enter into an agreement for a portion of the rail, primarily that between the Manchester Street Bridge, all the way to the Methuen Line, and that was part of the Manchester Street project along with the Spigot River Greenway. So we were able to enter into agreement with the MBTA for a ninety-nine year lease for that portion of Essex Street. We've identified the fact that the rest of the rail that runs between Manchester Street all the way down to, I think, Market Street, has also been a source of blight for many, many years, and it is our intention to figure out a way to move forward with cleaning up the rail and with the potential of making it more of passive rail trail that the city and residents could use going forward.
Well, does that mean that they're changing that corner in, on Common Street where they, all the buses come to me? Is it the buses or?
No, not, not MVRTA, MBTA.
MBTA, okay, explain.
Right. So MVRTA is the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority, and they operate all of the buses in the city, and they operate primarily out of Lawrence and Havre with services that serve Andover, North Andover, Methuen. The MBTA.
So those buses don't go to Common Street?
No, these are, this is the trail line, the, sorry, the train rail.
Oh, the train rail.
Correct.
See, that's why I asked, is it buses or train?
Sure.
Okay, so you're talking specifically about the train.
Exactly. So that particular rail, train rail, has been inactive for upwards of three years, and even before the three years, it had very limited service, and the MBTA and Pan Am, who operates the rail on that line, has had limited activity on that. So they've themselves have come to the agreement that the rail has very little use for them now, and we petitioned them, and we made a request that the city be allowed to move forward for possibility of future development on the rail.
All right, so this is in Manchester where the cemetery is at, and?
Correct, so the rail.
And it goes up to Methuen?
Correct, so the rail, the rail line is the Lawrence-Manchester rail, and it's a branch of the bigger network, the Boston-Maine rail, and this portion of it served Lawrence and Manchester for the moving of freight between these two industrial cities.
Now, was this the same announcement that State Representative Frank Moran spoke of, that at the State House they were talking about?
Yeah, so we've been working.
Reviving that area?
Yeah, so we've been working closely with Representative Frank Moran, so he is part of this process, and he's been entrenched in this as well. I've kinda led the way, you know, just the legwork and making sure everything gets done. I've been leading that process. So yes, he is, he is involved in this, and this is as much his project as it is mine and the administration's.
And you, and you wanna lease this for a penny or a dollar?
No, so it's a, it's a zero dollar lease, and the terms of the lease, I kind of have some.
Silver dollar lease, you said?
No, a no dollar lease.
No dollar. Oh, no dollar.
A zero dollar lease. And the terms of the lease is that we're able to do pretty much what we'd like with some limitations for a period of ninety-nine years.
Okay, so we're gonna let them use it?
No, so this lease essentially allows us to move forward with any future development that, or plans that we'd like to implement for this rail.
Through you, Mr. President.
Okay, so they're not asking us for permission to lease it?
No, we're asking them for permission.
We're asking them for permission to lease it.
Correct.
Okay, and the advantage of doing that is that we will be able to revive that area?
I mean, it provides us with more flexibility to move forward with potential plans to redevelop the rail, yes.
And is there money?
Counselor Vasquez has her point of information.
I think Mr. Vargas just clarified the confusion Counselor Alvarez had. We are looking to lease the premises, they're not looking to.
It's not that they're looking to lease from us, and I thank you so much for providing. I know I can be a little dense on Tuesdays, but just to, just to make, make it clear though, do we have, is Frank Moran, 'cause I almost thought that he was saying that we would be able to grab a hold of some grant dollars to do the renovations, or?
Yeah, we're not there yet. We, we've applied for two separate grants. One grant is in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for Brownfields Area Wide Planning Grant, and I've provided you with, with the confirmation of that grant application. So we have that in place, and we're not a hundred percent sure that we'll get the grant, but we feel pretty good about it. And then the second grant that we have in place is a Brownfields Assessment Grant, which will allow us to assess the parcels, well, the actual rail and the parcels that surround the rail, so that if we wanted to encourage private development, we'd at least have a good sense of what contamination issues are associated with, with the rail and those parcels surrounding it. So those are two grants that we have in place that should assist us in both planning and having some functional or some substantive recommendations as far as what the contamination along the rail is.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Counsel.
Any other questions?
Mr. President.
Yes.
No, it's not necessarily a question, but more of a, you know, adding two cents into the conversation. Mr. Vargas and I had the opportunity to speak about this, you know, a couple of times, and I strongly support this, you know, this measure, because it will have a great impact, particularly in the, in the district that I represent. About half of this piece of land, or, you know, this rail, it's in District C, which is an area that I represent, and I think that it will be great for residents of that area to have some, something in addition to the Spigot River Greenway to be able to bike, walk, have some recreational activities and beyond. It's gonna help in purifying that area of the city, which I think is desperately needed. So I do see a lot of great potential in this project. I know that this is something long-term, we might not see the results right away over this summer, but long-term, I think that it will be great. It will potentially attract, you know, investors into the city, because it's gonna look nicer. That area where we're talking about, it's one of the entry points for the city of Lawrence, and from the cemetery area, I mean, it's one of the entry points, at least in my beautiful neighborhood. So I do wanna see some changes there, so I hope that we do support it strongly tonight. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vargas.
And just as Counselor Vasquez mentioned, this is really step one of a lot of steps, and we'd love for you guys to be involved in that, once we potentially get that grant funding, so we could have a plan that represents the interests of not just us, but of you guys in the community.
Okay, thank you. Let's take a vote, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Document four oh four fourteen, Mr. Chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Document four oh four fourteen is fiscal year twenty fifteen state nine-one-one Department Training Grant, an EMD regulatory, regulatory compliance grant on the amount of a hundred thousand dollars, and it had been placed on the agenda by Mr., by the chief of the Police Department, Fitzpatrick. He was before the Budget and Finance Subcommittee meeting to explain specifically what this grant will entail, and I would like to make a motion to approve.
Motion has been made and properly second to approve document four oh four fourteen. Are there any questions or discussions? If there is none, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Chairman of the Housing Committee, document three twelve fourteen and three thirteen fourteen, you want me to refer those back to the Housing Committee, right? Please. I'm referring document three twelve fourteen and three thirteen fourteen to the Housing Committee. And.
Counsel President?
Yes.
I'm sorry, document three ninety-eight dash fourteen, which is, I think, the next item on the agenda?
Three ninety-eight?
Yes.
Oh, yes, three ninety-eight fourteen, yes.
There was, Officer Flores was here earlier this evening.
Yes.
Like.
He had to go.
Yeah, and I don't blame him. He did wanna file with us a document, and I'm gonna give it to the clerk, regarding the address, which is inaccurate on their application. He said that the address should actually be one oh five B Essex Street. The address that is on the application is this, I'm losing my place.
Two ninety-six.
Two ninety-six Broadway.
Two ninety-six Broadway, which is not accurate, that's a restaurant, as I pointed out at the last meeting, which was part of the reason why we had concerns about that application, because they didn't have adequate off-street parking for the vehicles that they said they had.
But we also have some concerns about.
Yeah, so I guess.
Competing with regular taxi companies.
Fighting over medallions versus they're not doing that.
Yes.
So my suggestion, Officer Flores is available to come next week.
Okay, then let's invite him, let's invite him, and let's re, let's.
Invite him again, yeah.
Can we table, should we table this document? No. Leave it in all business, okay.
Sure.
Okay.
Send Lillian a letter to these people.
Okay, counselors, I'm hoping that you don't wanna pull anything out of the all business, so I'm gonna go and direct.
What's on the agenda? Approve it.
The different items to different subcommittees. Item one fifteen, trenchion vendor license going to the ordinance committee. Item two fifteen, trenchion vendor license going to the ordinance committee. Item three fifteen, handicap parking going to the ordinance committee. Item four fifteen, illegal curb cut and demolition going to the ordinance committee. Item five, five fifteen, trenchion vendor license going down to the ordinance committee. Item six fifteen, trenchion vendor license going down to the ordinance committee. Item seven fifteen, trenchion vendor license going down to the ordinance committee. Item nine fifteen, surplus property going down to the Housing Committee. Item ten fifteen, counselors, you have a copy of the contract that I gave you on the renewal contract of Attorney Guano. Okay, so please review that, because we're gonna, the personal committee's gonna review that and then refer it back to the full counsel, okay?
I read a memo that said it was going to committee as a whole, that's no longer true?
Oh, yeah, yeah, probably, yes, let me, let me do that. Let me refer that to the committee as a whole rather than.
I mean, that was a memo I read.
No, 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 that's fine, let me do that. Probably, probably that's what I thought, and I forgot about it. Okay, so it's going to the committee as a whole, okay? Item eleven fifteen, Shannon Committee Safety Grant going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Item fourteen fifteen, taxi license, this is an ordinance, so, that we are creating, so that's gonna go to the ordinance committee for discussion, and hopefully the city attorney can, I believe that the Officer Flores, I believe, is the one, and I advise him to see, to see Attorney Bodie, so that we can create some language that can come back to the full counsel, first to the ordinance committee and then to the full counsel. Item fifteen fifteen, city of Lawrence towing, towing fees and procedures, I'm sending this to the ordinance committee for discussion, there's some information that the city clerk may be able to provide us as to what we control and cannot control about towing.
Why this became fourteen?
Then, lastly, item sixteen fifteen, parkland acquisition and renovation for communities, this is going to the Housing Committee.
Okay.
Counselors, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Wait, before we do.
Okay.
I just wanna know what the committee meetings are gonna be like, and also in, in terms of the council president and myself having discussion about who can be at a meeting and who cannot, and why it would be in violation of the open meeting law.
Yes.
By that same token, it means, and I was saying this for years, people would say, "Well, if you wanna know what's going on, you should go to a subcommittee." I said, "But why bother to have a subcommittee, you know, if you have to be there and not be able to kinda wait?" Well, it turns out that we are not supposed to be at the subcommittee meetings, especially if we make up a quorum of the council.
Of five.
Right, so we're not supposed to discuss anything? We can go open, not speak?
Yes.
And that's, you know.
So that's something that we need.
Open meeting law.
I think this is something, again, new to us, and probably we have violated that many times.
A bunch of times.
Many times, because there have been instances in subcommittees where more than two counselors, visitors have been present. So it is important that we keep this in mind, so that we won't continue.
But we're not voting members.
No, no, it's not about being voting member, it's just that, it's just that five counselors together constitute a quorum of the city council.
Of the council.
It's not that.
Huh?
No, it's not just.
If I may advise the council, the last time we ran across this, it was based on a complaint with the district attorney's office, who advised that council members, and I think you were on the council at the time, may be present, but not be part of the voting panel.
Or discussion.
And not participate in any deliberation or discussion, or take any vote, so non-members are encouraged to sit.
And they cannot participate in discussion.
They just cannot participate in the discussion.
They can't participate, no.
They're not, they're not allowed to deliberate and take a vote.
But I see a problem.
And we did that.
There is an opinion with the city attorney, I'll probably have to get that, get that to the council.
I see a problem.
Yes.
A committee normally has four people, okay? But then, there may be an item that is placed in the agenda by another counselor that he needs to come in and talk to the subcommittee, so that may be a problem.
So.
Supposed to stand there.
Stand over there.
Oh, okay, okay. That's good.
But he can't deliberate, he could just tell us what he, what, okay?
So let's keep that in mind, okay? They cannot sit here.
Yeah, I just want us to, you know, moving forward.
Thank you, thank you.
And, you know, we've learned a lot of things while looking at.
We are learning, we are learning, I mean.
While looking at how the process has been violated, we have actually learned that we have violated the process ourselves.
Yes, yes.
And hopefully, from here on, we will not be doing that.
Definitely, definitely, we need to, we need to take notice.
Yes.
On these things. Okay, counselors, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll go for a Housing Committee meeting on January twenty-sixth, does that work for the two remaining counselors? It's Monday, seven o'clock.
Madam Chair of the Audit Committee, are we having a meeting this Thursday?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, good.
I may be a little late on the twenty-sixth.
Seven thirty?
Jennifer.
Counsel Bernal, does that work? Seven thirty on the twenty-sixth.
There was a, the personal, the personal committee wanted to meet on Wednesday, on Wednesday of, of the following week.
Yeah. Twenty-first, right?
Twenty-first.
But Mr. Tumi, Mr. Tumi cannot make it early, at six thirty.
I'd like to see it seven.
Is it possible that you guys can meet early and then we can meet after you guys?
Budget and Finance?
The Budget and Finance Committee?
Hundred twenty-six.
When?
Six kills me already.
Next week?
No, 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 I mean, if you guys wanna meet at six thirty, seven o'clock, that's fine.
Six thirty.
The Budget and Finance Committee?
Yes, six thirty, yes.
I can do six thirty.
Six thirty? Can you meet at six thirty?
Six thirty.
Yeah. Mark? It's hard for me to be here at six thirty.
I understand, I mean, again, that's what I'm asking.
You check, what day is it again?
Is it, is the, the twenty-first, yes.
Wednesday, the twenty-first.
It's Wednesday, the twenty-first, yes.
That's a regular meeting.
I'm a regular meeting, yeah.
Huh?
Twenty-first.
Yeah, the 20th is the council meeting, yes, so Wednesday is the Budget and Finance Committee.
Right.
Now, the Housing Committee is, the personal committee is not meeting on Monday, because it's a holiday, that's why.
And we're still meeting tomorrow at six?
Six?
At seven tomorrow. A licensing board, yeah, we're meeting at six.
We are.
And tomorrow?
So, Mr. Plant, what do you think?
Yeah, yeah, that's, yes.
Good to know.
Can you do it?
Move on for next week.
I might be a little late.
Okay, okay, good. Budget and Finance Committee is gonna meet on the 21st at six-thirty, and the personal committee is gonna meet after. Yes, whenever they're finished.